The guy that wouldn't let you go through his property.
I understand.
Call this council meeting of June 12, 2006 to order. Clerk Whitby, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Gibson is absent. Bryant?
Present.
Robinson?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Berry?
Present.
Parker?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
McCormick is present, sir.
Thank you. That's all stand now is Alderman Murray Witcher is going to lead us in the prayer and Alderman Neil Bryant leads in the pledge.
Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for many blessings that you've bestowed on our lives. Thank you for your mercy and thank you for your grace. Forgive us of our sins as we go forward and those that we've committed. Help and guide us to be better individuals on a daily basis. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the question.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry? Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. I move to accept and file one through 10, except for number four.
Wait a minute. Second. Motion is that we accept and file one through?
10, with the exception of four.
Exception of four. So we want four read, which the mayor has requested that we also read, so.
Ard had called me. He wants, I don't even know what his is. He wanted his read.
Number nine?
What?
Number nine.
Okay.
Read number four and 10.
Nine.
Alright. So the ones that we are not going to read, that's, I'm, okay, I have a motion on those.
Everything except four.
Accept and file. Everything except? Wait, I need, I need 10 also. 10's already been, okay, I can request.
So four, nine, and 10 will be read.
Okay, so with the exception of four, nine, and 10?
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry? Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number four. A letter dated June 6, 2006. Ms. Diane Whitby and members of the North Little Rock City Council. Dear Ms. Whitby and City Council members, this is to advise that I will be out of the country on Monday, June 12, 2006, attending an International Sister Cities program in Italy. Alderman Charlie Height will be presiding over the city council meeting in my absence. Regarding any legislation that I have sponsored, Alderman Height will be aware of my request regarding the same. Thanking you in advance, I remain sincerely Patrick H. Hayes, Mayor.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number nine?
Number nine, please.
Do you want that read in its entirety or by title?
By title.
He wanted to hear it read, so let's, let's let him hear it.
Okay. This is a letter dated June 9, 2006, to Mr. Robert S. Moore, Jr., Alcoholic Beverage Control Administration Division, regarding an application for a beer permit for the Bush Pepsi Softball Classic. Clint Albright applicant, North Little Rock Certuma Club nonprofit participant. Dear Mr. Moore, as you may recall, I have long been an opponent of the sale of beer and/or alcohol at Burns Park and in conjunction with the softball classic. Last year, I observed an alarming lack of security at the back gate of the Burns Park facility during the tournament. I voiced my concerns about this issue to the North Little Rock Parks and Recreation Commission and believe that upon review of the security plan, only having two security guards on premises that are this large is not safe. I feel this is not adequate because two officers cannot be present at the front gate, the back gate, and the point of sale, and also be able to take their potty breaks. In my opinion, you need at least four officers. Also, I would like phone numbers to contact law enforcement officers in the event laws are being broken. Once again, please accept this letter of opposition to the granting of this permit and carefully consider whether the safety plan is adequate to safely monitor underage drinking as well as participant's safety and conduct. Thank you, Jimmy Ard. And then there is also a letter dated March 20th that was, or I'm sorry, it's a portion of the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting from March 20th.
I think it's Mr. Ard's letter that you wanted read. Is that correct, Alderman?
Is there a motion?
A motion?
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number 10, do you want that read or by title?
Read it, please.
A letter dated June 12, 2006, to Mayor Patrick H. Hayes and North Little Rock City Council. Dear Mayor Hayes and City Council, the Parks and Recreation Department is holding a public hearing concerning three concepts for a master plan at the next Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. City council input is desired and encouraged. The commission meeting will be Monday, June 19, 2006, at 5:00 PM in the Patrick Henry Hayes Senior Center. The public hearing will begin at approximately 5:15 PM. Preliminary concepts have been included for your consideration. If you have any questions or comments prior to the meeting, please contact me at 791-8538. Sincerely, Bob Rhodes, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that the public hearing will begin at 5:15. Anybody who's interested, please, please come. Motion to accept and file.
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the communication, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And according to my agenda, we don't have any presentations to be made tonight. But before we do that, I'm going to recognize a special guest in our audience. The mayor does a good job in recognizing his granddaughters when they're here, but my granddaughters are not here tonight. But I do want to recognize someone that's awfully important in my life, which is my wife, Becky, so, welcome Becky. You dressed him well tonight. Okay, so since we don't have any presentations, we'll move into the agenda. And I guess we'll start off with old business, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Resolution 0677, Mayor Hayes.
That's the resolution declaring, I guess he wants to call that, please.
Yes, sir. Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1324 Division in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property under to abate said nuisance.
We had, we had a public hearing on this last council meeting, is that not correct?
No, sir. It was held, and I believe it had something to do with Mr. Harrod had contacted the mayor's office.
We held it because, okay. Let's hold it again, then. Both of those, I'd request the mayor hold both of the condemnation. He wants to hold those, both of them? Then we'll hold R-0677. Next, please.
Resolution 0678. Do you want that held as well?
Let's hold that.
Okay. Ordinance 0646, Mayor Hayes.
Hold it. I know we want to hold that because the issue of the electric rates has not come up, and we haven't got a contract, and we don't know what the proposals are. So we'll hold that till the next council meeting.
Okay. Ordinance 0649, Alderman Gibson.
He's not here, and I don't know what, does anybody have any idea what he wants to do on that? Let's hold that one.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 0657, Alderman Parker.
I'd like to read it one more time, please.
This is an ordinance authorizing a barrier to be installed on West Scenic Drive, approximately 190 feet west of Parkview Drive, noting change on master street plan. Second reading.
Did you want to hold it now, or?
Yeah, I'd like to hold it. I'd also like to, if it's appropriate at this time, bring up some correspondence that I've received pertaining to this since our last meeting.
I think that's acceptable.
That acceptable. It's not necessarily opening up for public hearing or discussion, but I do want to present some things that's, that may weigh on our decision when that time comes. Since our last meeting, the residents of Scenic Hill have reorganized a group with this letter. I don't have a copy to give to everyone, but it's a reorganization letter of the Scenic Hill Neighborhood Residents, core group of concerned Scenic Hill residents and neighbors that are interested in reorganizing and revitalizing the Scenic Hill Crime Watch and Neighborhood Association. The basis of this reorganization is to address two particular issues currently. One before the Planning Commission on rezoning for apartments, and the other is the issue that we have before us tonight in the form of reading and blocking of West Scenic Drive. I just want to let everyone know that this is not a personal item or agenda of mine, that this is a neighborhood effort to correct some problems that we're facing in that area. And we are open for discussion on resolutions to those problems. To ignore the problem is if it doesn't affect us directly, or if it's not a concern, is not being prudent, in my opinion. Just want to let everyone know that there is an organized group of people that live in the area that are meeting and working together to find solutions. I've also received a couple of letters pertaining to this issue from residents, and other than the fact that most of them acknowledge that we have a problem and a solution is the only issue at hand, what the solution to the problem might be, they're bringing up additional concerns about what the closure of West Scenic Drive may do to create a hardship for individuals trying to either exit Scenic Hill during inclement weather, when we have ice on the roadways, and our traffic problems entering Persian Boulevard from Tech Drive. These likewise are concerns of mine also, but these are issues that were brought up in addition to the original problem of traffic and litter on Scenic Hill. In an effort to address both these concerns, I have asked our planning department to initiate a effort to determine if an additional street on West Scenic would help to alleviate some of these problems by adding it to our master street plan. Tech Drive, in its current condition, is inadequate for the growth on that end of the hill. When Tech Drive was built, and those apartments were built some 38 years ago, the foresight was not put in place to address the issue that has developed over time with the growth of the Plasky Tech and the apartments themselves. We need another way off the hill, particularly on that end, to alleviate the need for the cut-through traffic. The other issue that's of equal concern to me is the inclement weather issue. I too live on Scenic Hill, and I realize even though it's been very few times that I was not able to get up and down the hill, either by way of Scenic Drive or Avalon, that Valley View is impossible to traverse in inclement weather. This is probably one of the steepest hills in North Little Rock, as steep as Snake Hill, in my opinion. I don't know what the grade is on the hill, but it would be impossible to travel up and down that hill on, if the weather was iced over. It wouldn't even be practical to clear the street. So that street would be closed during bad ice storms. One of the letters I received was from a resident of that street, and they indicated that they had to leave their car parked at the top of the hill and had no other way of getting off the hill other than via Tech Drive. If we should be so inclined to put a gate on West Scenic to alleviate some of the problems that have been brought to our attention, I would propose that that gate be accessible and open during times of inclement weather or emergencies such as fire or some other reasons, so that the gate would not be a permanent block, but something that we could access, so that it could be open when we need it to open. With that said, I hope that everyone understands that there's no rush to judgment on a conclusion to this problem, but I want everyone to also understand that we do have a problem and that we're looking for solutions, and this is just simply one of them that's been offered. In addition, next council meeting, one of our North Rock benefactors has found it in his heart to contribute the three acres just to the south of Scenic Hill for the purpose of clearing the litter debris that has accumulated over the last 38 years to the city of North Little Rock. And I look forward to accepting that contribution to the city at our next meeting. It is impossible to clean up private property with city workers, and I know of no individual volunteers that is willing to undertake the project. Therefore, if we receive this property that has been nothing more than a litter container over the past 38 years as a contribution to the city, I think it's, would behoove us to not only clean it up, but keep it clean. And one way we can stop it from being a litter basket or collector is to eliminate the cause of that. And one of those things is the cut-through traffic coming to Scenic Hill. Very little litter you'll find on Scenic Hill, on any of those residential streets. But I challenge any of you that are questioning what I'm saying to go up and take a look at these access routes. Walk around Scenic Hill on the Scenic Drive, John Ashley Lane, and Avalon coming up to Scenic Hill. Because I personally haven't picked the trash up intentionally in several weeks just so that you could see how bad the problem is. It is horrendous. It looks like an entrance to the interstate. It is the most unbelievable blight on our beautiful city that I can imagine, and no one is going to do anything about it. It is not the city's responsibility to clean it up. I suppose it's the individual who owns the property's responsibility. But Lord knows, it's a big job. But we need to stop the problem, not find a way to clean it up. Because I assure you, if you cleaned it up tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, it would be back the same way it was. I've done it, I know. So I'm looking for this council, which I hope in their wisdom will agree with me that we need to address the problem and not just ignore it. With that said, I'd like to hold it till, third reading till next, next time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know there's a lot of the audiences out there that wishes to speak on this, but seeing as we didn't have a public hearing tonight, I would invite them to stay to the end when there is a public comment, and it will certainly be heard. And your voices can be heard and the concerns can be taken care of.
The consideration of brevity, though, we'd hope that people would keep their comments as short as possible tonight if they're going to wait till a public comment. Very good, sir. Okay.
New Business?
New Business.
Resolution 0684, Mayor Hayes.
Please call that.
A resolution accepting the design recommendations of Gorman Design for the downtown development of the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
I don't know, yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0685, Mayor Hayes.
Please call that.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the city of Sherwood and Pulaski County for the installation of a traffic signal at North Hills Boulevard and Seminole Trail and appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And 0686, Mayor Hayes.
Please call that.
A resolution certifying local government endorsement of Brenton Sam's Cookies to participate in the tax-backed program as authorized in Arkansas Code 1542706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0687, Mayor Hayes.
Please call that.
A resolution certifying local government endorsement of Alliance Parts Warehouse to participate in the tax-backed program is authorized by Arkansas Code 1542706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0688, Alderman Gibson.
Since he's not here, we'll hold that.
Ordinance 0659, Alderman Height.
Could I ask, before we hold it, Mr. Wadley?
Yeah, we may need to pass this, because we may be out of money.
We may need to act on this?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to?
That's Martin Gibson, Alderman Gibson sponsored that, but that's to renew our demolition fund. We get a certain amount the first of the year. When that is expended, then y'all will go ahead and replenish that loss.
Then I withdraw my request to hold it? I'd like to, I'm speaking for my seatmate, but why don't we go ahead and call it?
Move for adoption. Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0659?
Can we help, I think we have a procedural issue. I'm sorry, but I don't.
You can't, we can't call it.
I don't think you can call someone else's legislation unless they specifically ask you to do it.
That's a, that's a standard procedure, he's right.
Mr. Wadley? Is a two-week hold in this going to bring a severe? Can you add me as a sponsor? Hardship on your department?
Yes, I talked with, Becky Taylor called me Sunday and asked me about that, and she said that she had talked to Alderman Gibson and that it would be brought up tonight. We've already got some funds expended that need to be covered for that.
Okay.
City Attorney?
Then there. Two weeks won't hurt. Okay.
We have to expunge that vote, then?
That's a spudge, yeah.
I move to expunge.
Someone else will make a motion?
Expunge the vote.
To expunge the vote, Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0659, Alderman Height.
Please call that.
This is an ordinance amending sections of Chapter 74 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code relating to solicitations on or near public streets, first reading.
I want to hold this ordinance. This bit of legislation that I've asked the city attorney's office to put together for me stems from an organization that's been in, and Alderman, Witcher, and I has awarded for the last month or so soliciting funds at the major intersections there. In fact, when we came, my wife and I came to a city council meeting tonight at about 6:30 PM, there was two or three people working the intersection of McCain and North Hills Boulevard. And there hadn't been a day goes by that I haven't seen the same organization working either JFK and McCain, McCain, North Hills, or McCain and Warden over on the, over by McCain Mall. So I've asked the city attorney's office to bring us up to date as to what, what type of legislation we have now restricting our, and my intention is not to ban solicitations or for donations at our intersections, but it is to get a tighter control on it. It's my knowledge, and this is strictly hearsay, that the organization that's up at McCain and JFK, or McCain and North Hills, and McCain and Warden is an out-of-state group here from possibly Texas, and they're, it appears that they have gotten a permit from us, but we're going to, what I want to do is call a public hearing for the next council meeting. I want to hear from the public, and also I want to hear from the other aldermen as far as any amendments or changes they'd like to see in this legislation. And then I, it's also my intent that at the next council meeting, after the, after the public hearing and after the comments by the, by the rest of the city council and the amendments, to bring it for a vote. So go on, please hold that at this time, and call for a public hearing at the next council meeting.
What is the organization? What is it?
It's, it's, basically they're collecting for, and if I read the bucket, or the label on the bucket correctly, they're collecting for needy children and women.
So all they'd have to do is just go out and become charitable, and then they can stay out on JFK and on Hills.
They're also, tonight they're also at Pike and Pershing.
And they were walking in between the cars tonight up at JFK, McCain and North Hills, and stopping the flow of traffic. So, and it's, it's like Alderwoman Robinson, it's not my intention to ban solicitations, but it's to, to kind of put a little bit tighter control on it for us in the future.
I understand.
I've had several phone calls from my constituents. Y'all may have gotten some from, from your people down in your other wards, but I assure you that my phone's ringing off the hook. People are upset, or they're, they're just, they're tired of being intimidated by people up there. Every time you go to the grocery store, or go to the service station to get gasoline, or just go anywhere, someone is sticking a bucket in your window or standing in front of you and waiting until you donate before you let you go. So we're going to work on this.
Mr. Height?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, you know that I support the legislation that you filed, and I would like to be a co-sponsor. One of the things that I would ask is, as we go into public hearings, if we would also discuss banning solicitations in the streets entirely.
Your wishlist as, as, as things that we'd like to have in this, in this legislation is what I want us to all kind of put together at the next council meeting is what we would like to see in this legislation, how it restricts it, how it allows it, what entities can, what entities can solicit donations, what the length of the term of the permit might be, and how often they can get a permit, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I'd also like to ask that Alderman Witcher be added as a co-sponsor of this legislation. Yeah, I'd like to add my name to that, and I've had several phone calls on this same issue as to asking me who these people are and what they're soliciting funds for. And so I think the legislation is well timed, and I appreciate very much that Mayor Height has.
I'll go for that, too.
Brought it up, thank you.
We're in the same boat.
Well, we just, is anybody that doesn't want to be added as a co-sponsor?
I don't want to eliminate the firemen from their work.
We're not going to eliminate the firemen.
Well, they solicit.
They solicit, but, and, and the way that this legislation is designed, they'll be allowed to continue to solicit.
You're picking ones that can and ones that can't?
No, what we're doing, what we're going, hope to do is that we're going to allow people to solicit donations on behalf of a, of an organization, not as individuals. And the firemen and the policemen can certainly continue soliciting donations on part of a charitable organization in the future. That wouldn't stop, that wouldn't restrict them from doing such, but they've done good work in the past. So is there anyone at the council meeting tonight that does not want to be added as a co-sponsor of this legislation?
I don't want to be on it until I know what you, what you're doing.
So does that mean that Alderman Thomas, you don't want to be added as a co-sponsor? Alderwoman Robinson, do you want to be added as a co-sponsor to this legislation?
Just need to know more about it.
At this point, then, I'm going to, I'll request that Alderman Bryant, Alderman Berry, Alderman Parker, and Alderman Witcher be added as co-sponsors of this legislation. Ordinance 0659, please.
Yes, sir.
Next, next item. I mean, we called a public hearing for seven o'clock at the next council meeting. I mean, we called a public hearing for seven o'clock at the next council meeting.
Ordinance oh six sixty, Mayor Hayes.
Please call that.
This is an ordinance accepting the annexation of lands commonly described as lands to be titled the Vogel Lake Annexation to the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and making Vogel Lake Annexation a part of the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Please hold it.
That concludes new business.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to call a public hearing for this? Or did the public hearing that they had suffice for the?
This annexation does not require a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. That concludes the agenda. Does any of the alderwomen or aldermen have any comments they'd like to make this time?
I'd like to see Dan Scott when the meeting's open.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, tonight I noticed again that weeds in the, I guess it's called weeds across from Old Town Reno, and that piece of ground is really growing up, and I know our code people have to go out and ask the other people to cut the grass, so that ought to be taken care of as well.
The property adjacent to Old Town Reno?
Across the street there.
Yeah, the old presidential bakery.
It's really grown up, and it needs to, it needs to look a little better than it does there. There's supposed to be some pretty high, expensive land there.
Alderwoman Robinson?
I'd like to ask code enforcement a question, please.
Sure.
I've been getting phone calls regarding grass on vines and things on fence rows. What is our policy on that? Do you know offhand? Can we make people clean off their fence?
The council's never passed any legislation that concerns that. We've got the grass, the grass is specific in the ordinance. It doesn't tell us how to trim bushes, what kind of vines, if people want honeysuckle on their fences, it doesn't say where they can or can't have it. There's nothing specific that covers fence rows.
Thank you.
I guess I need to ask you a question. Do we sometimes use our code department to go out and take the old tires and all the trash down the alleys out? Do we do that sometimes?
The city alleys? Talking about through the actually designated city alleys? That would come under sanitation. We don't, we don't, the code enforcement doesn't pick up trash. We're an enforcement agency. In the wintertime, we do some right-ofways and picking up tires along the street when we're not having to mow grass, but as far as.
This one, the alley, and I thought they said they were from code department was cleaning it all out, and I thought it'd probably be a good idea, but I didn't know you did that.
Are you talking about in Dixie?
No, no, it's out in a near, near tie plant.
I'm not familiar with it. Now, we have cleared some brush from alleys and right-ofway, but not picking up trash, that's very rare.
There was, you know, maybe a half truckload of, pick-up truckload of tires and things like that there, so, but it's good to get rid of it, but I didn't know that we did that.
Like I said, during the winter months, when the grass isn't growing, and we have time to devote to other things, I'll have my maintenance men do some alleys, but during the summertime, they're strictly bush-hogging.
Mr. Wadley, what can we do about people that allow ivy and weeds to grow over our sidewalks that impede the people trying to use those sidewalks? Can we do anything about that?
We've gone out ourselves and cut it since it's out on the city right-ofway itself.
So we can, we can do that in your department?
We have eradicated some vines out on the, to the right-ofway before. I know which one I think you're specifically talking about.
Speak to my wife, she knows specifically where it is.
That's right, because we've been out there at your request before, and we've cleaned some off of the walkway.
Well, they're letting it grow again, so, if you get a chance, you know where that location is, y'all can take a look at it, please.
Okay.
You know, Tom, I'm sorry you're up there, because I just thought of something.
That's all right, go ahead.
As a matter of fact, I will speak to it tomorrow night. We have some houses that people use for storage that no one lives there, and I know particularly one of my people that live in my ward has one next door to them, the house is pretty much falling down around itself. Do we have anything, any code?
I would have to refer that to the city attorney's office. I believe they were involved in some litigation in Park Hill concerning some property owners that were using a house for storage, and I'm not sure what the outcome of that was.
Okay, but we don't have a specific ordinance that doesn't, that says something to the effect?
There's nothing specifically defined as to what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. It could be one example where somebody's using it to store business materials would be something opposed to somebody that's storing furniture in there, and it's unoccupied because the resident's in a nursing home, and they're simply storing furniture. So there's nothing specifically defined in the city ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other alderman?
Okay, we'll open up the microphones this time for public comments.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. I want to start off, thanks to people tonight for two years. One of them is sitting right over here, Joel Reynolds, and the other one is Martin Gibson that I want to thank personally for the committee that he was on to see that this Morgan portable building, I didn't tell you, all is gone. My wife followed it to Alexander, so it's on its way probably to Hot Springs.
Mr. Taylor, let me say, my wife and I were down in your area of the, of the city a few days ago, and we drove around, I looked for that portable building everywhere and couldn't find it, so.
Well, it's right there on the corner of Middle and Boyer is where it was at, but it left Thursday morning about seven-thirty, quarter late. It took them about an hour and a half to get it up on Broadway, but it's gone. I want to thank the planning for the evidence that was brought against it, that it was rejected and brought back to the city council, and the city council rejected it, and it went to the court, and the lawyer, I can't think of his name, Jason Carter, he was the one I think that went to court and told me. And I want to thank everybody in the neighborhood out there. Thanks, y'all. They won't be down here to thank you, but if you see them out there, they'll tell you that they appreciate it. And I don't know what else to say, but the neighborhood is back, and I hope that planning is waiting on grass, because I've heard a few of his rumors of what he was fixing to do. And the first block or brick or anything that he brings there, I'm going to be on it worse than I was this time. So y'all will have a little help. I just get y'all to do y'all, y'all, this time we're going to be active. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joel Reynolds, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. I know we're going to have a public hearing on the solicitation situation next meeting, and I may not be here, so I'll put it to you this way. I don't want anybody soliciting me at an intersection, anywhere, anytime. I don't care if it's a fireman, or a policeman, or whatever. There's a better place to do these things than to get out in the street. Everybody knows that traffic is very heavy on McCain at JFK, like Brother Height said, and even at Pike Avenue this afternoon, like I say, when I came to the meeting, they were, they were doing it there, and the people that are doing it have no disregard, had every, they disregard every light, whatever. Once cars stop, they're going to be on them, and I don't want anybody putting a bucket in my face to solicit anything from me on the street. Now, if they've got a better place to do it, fine. They can even do it on the telephone if they want to, if they can get through. I have one other, one other comment. We had a very large project that was going to be built on McCain at Ridge, some apartments, and I believe they have not built them. They've got a lot of big piles of dirt out there, and I understand they were given a specific time to either start the project or to come back and re-landscape it like it was. Does anybody have a?
Mr. Vols, can you help us out here?
I'm getting tired of looking at it every time I go down to McCain over there. I don't know whose ward this is in, whose ward this is in. We're tired of looking at it, too.
We are tired of looking at it.
Yeah, we have.
And I have questioned it.
The builder has contacted Adfa asking to reduce the project. I informed them that the council would also have to amend its PUD since y'all approved a specific design. We gave them a period of time to start cleaning that up. Our plans reviewer was the one contacting them. I don't know the status right now, but I know we've, over a month ago, we did talk to them about starting to clean up if they're not going to move forward, but they've not come in for an amended PUD. I suppose Adfa's not responded, but I'll have a better answer next council meeting.
What do we need to do? We need to shut it down?
They're shut down.
They're shut down.
Well, they're shut down, but they're not doing anything. I mean, if I left a pile of junk in my place like that, somebody would be on me.
It is, it is rather unsightly.
It most definitely is.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I have a very unsightly situation out in my area that's not in the city, however it is zoned. Out near Arnold's Fireworks, I've talked to my alderman about it before, and it's not in the city, and we have a hard time getting anything done about it. I have contacted everybody that I can think of, and I can't get anybody to do anything about it. It seems to me that somebody should be able to help people clean up a mess like that.
You talking about where Arnold Fireworks is?
Just past Arnold's Fireworks, on the right.
On the right, it's not in the city?
Not in the city, but it is zoned.
It's a pocket.
It's in a two-mile territorial area. It is zoned. I don't know what we, I've been told that we can enforce zoning, but we can't enforce the code if it's not in the city. Somebody needs to be able to enforce it. Anybody coming from that direction really gets a good firsthand view of North Little Rock, like to do when they come in from East Broadway down there. We've got some bad areas that need to be fixed, like Scenic Hill does up here, the trash up there. We've got a lot of areas that need to be straightened up, and it seems to me that I've been coming to these council meetings for several years, and I don't see much improvement in some of those areas.
That's the first time I recall you, though, Mr. Reynolds, bringing that particular piece of property up to council meeting, and this is the first I've heard of it.
I brought it up once before, out on McCain.
Oh, McCain?
Not McCain, but out on McArthur. I brought that up one other time here.
Did you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphones open.
My name is James Langford. I'm a resident of the West Scenic Apartments. I'm the assistant pastor at my church, and I think that we ought to, I know the traffic and trash is a problem, but I think instead of working against the street, working against one another, we ought to come together. I see these people with the, with these green things on it. I don't, I don't see anybody that looks like me with them, and I wanted to know how I could become a part of, how West Scenic Apartment residents can become a part of it, because to say, to say to put a gate up there, and then for the climate weather, and to open it up when you need it, but to keep it closed when we need it, is so much favoritism, and, and because I don't see any me in that group right there, it almost reeks of racism. It almost. You know, I like to think we're living in the year two thousand and six instead of the nineteen sixty, but you know, I think we ought to work together. If we could just get a committee where we could work with this committee, work together to solve our problems instead of working against one another. Because we've got school buses that come there, pick up our kids, and all that would be interrupted. That's all I got.
Microphones open. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, the participants tonight. I'm LG Gilbert, minister for the East Side, while was minister for the East Side Church of Christ. I have one concern, a couple of them, but one particular soul. I have property here in North Little Rock, and I've been hearing about we're trying to make room to accommodate the arena. I can understand that. I appreciate the city growing to that effect, but what I'd like to know, is it feasible for one to buy, to purchase property in North Little Rock, especially out from fifteen, East Fifteenth Street, back north, Seventeenth Street, back east to Thirteenth Street? I'm understanding from some that we couldn't even get a permit to redo existing houses now, and because we're purchasing property out there for the arena. So, could you give me some enlightenment on that, please?
I think Mr. Vols can probably do a better job of enlightening you than I can, Mr. Vols.
I think this goes back to the rezone. We have property that's north of Fifteenth to Twentieth that's zoned commercial, it's a neighborhood. We had a staff-generated downzone requested by one of the aldermen here, and the neighborhood very concerned about losing property rights, and the general sentiment was to drop it. So we officially took that off the agenda. It's not on the planning commission's agenda. We withdrew the public hearing because the neighborhood objected to the downzoning. Now, that property is zoned C-three commercial, it's primarily residential, and the concern is getting refinancing. We can't say that it's residential. So it's a zoning problem that was created about forty years ago, and I don't know the answer because the neighborhood wants to keep their property rights higher, but we can't approve residential without getting a rezone or special use. So that's where we are. We dropped the public hearing. No one's buying that up for anything related to the arena. It's still a neighborhood, it's still zoned the way it was, and it's somewhat of a problem.
So this, is this a, something that needs to come back in front of the planning commission?
We're going to wait until the first of the year, because there was a general outcry opposed to the city initiating a downzone of that area. There was just, we tried to explain that we were trying to help the neighborhood by making it residential. It's generally residential, but, and they're all pretty much single-family houses, but people thought they would be losing value from their property, so we, we went with the general sentiment and announced we would withdraw that from the planning commission agenda, and we'll hold off and maybe do something next year, but we need some neighborhood meetings and try to get more people to understand we're trying to help that situation.
So basically, that's, I think you heard what you needed to hear. It might not have been what you wanted to hear, but that's from Mr. Vols, who is closer to that subject than I, than I am at this time, so.
Sir, to clarify, let me get understanding. Do the city, at this point, does the city have any plans of purchasing that property, property from Fifteenth Street, Seventeenth Street, Thirteenth Street, and back?
No, sir. There was no, that was not our intent. There've been individuals who've wanted to build homes or refinance property there. We can't tell the banks or the mortgage institutions that it's zoned for residential, so the city had no interest in trying to acquire that area. We were trying to help property owners, but there was a general, I guess a distrust of government or something, but the general sentiment was, we don't understand this, so the planning commission's willing to withdraw it until we can get a better understanding in the community about what we're trying to do. We're trying to make a neighborhood residential, and we were not, the city's not trying to buy property. We were trying to give you property rights and allow people to refinance properties.
Thank you.
You know.
Thank you.
Microphones open.
Hi, I'm Bruce Fauch. I'm the vice president of the Scenic Hill Crime Watch and Neighborhood Association, and we'd just like to thank Alderman Parker for his efforts in cleaning up the litter on the hill, and also to state, this is not only a litter issue, but is definitely a public safety issue. The students at Pulaski Tech used several of those avenues up the hill to take a shortcut around the Pike and Pershing stoplight. There are lots of children on the Avalon side of the hill, and they are sometimes in danger, and parents are concerned about that, and that's one of the reasons why we brought this forward to the council, is to make you aware that there are other issues besides the litter. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphones open.
Mayor Height and Councilman, my name is Connie Phillips. My husband Jimmy and I are also residents of the East Scenic Hill area. We own three pieces of property, one on Avalon, one on East Scenic, one on Cliffwood. We live on the one in East Scenic. We also want to thank Alderman Parker for his efforts. He doesn't just talk the talk, but he walks the walk, and he's out there cleaning up. I would invite anybody who feels excluded to come and volunteer on Sundays when Alderman Parker is there and help us clean up the trash, because it is a problem. One alternative to the gate might be to put some stop signs up and try that for a time to see if that will slow the traffic down. I can tell you at the point where I enter the road to come out, there's a stop sign to my left and a yield sign across from me, and I seldom ever see anybody yield or stop. In the morning, there's a school bus that stops there approximately seven forty. People come around the corner and totally disregard the fact it's got its red stop sign out when kids are trying to board that bus, and that is a real, I think, a safety concern that everybody's concerned about as well, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphones open. Do I have a motion?
One thing before we go. Saturday, June the seventeenth, annual motorcycle ride fundraiser for North Little Rock Friends of Animal. For more information, please call seven nine one eight five seven seven.
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.